Greetings. Good evening, everyone. Good to see you all. Thanks for joining for our school board meeting on this Monday, April 21st. I will begin by establishing that we have a quorum, beginning with a roll call vote. Corby.
Here.
John.
Here.
Meredith. Christopher.
Here.
And I am here as well. We do have a quorum. Corby, has this meeting been properly noted?
Yes, it has.
Wonderful. To help ensure that we're centering our boardwork around our shared values and serving our students, we begin each of our board meetings by reading our district's equity framework and the Ho-Chung Land Acknowledgement, which can be found at the top of the agenda. Christopher, would you please read those aloud for us this evening?
Yes. In the Verona Area School District, our mission is that each student will acquire the knowledge and necessary skills to achieve their personal goals, thrive in a diverse global society, and lead a healthy, self-fulfilling life. To meet this mission, the Verona Area School District will ensure that every individual has access to the educational, social, and emotional support they need to feel valued and affirmed in their unique identities and experiences. We acknowledge that inequities and power dynamics exist in our systems such that some individuals, on the basis of their identities, face barriers to accessing the opportunities they need to experience success. An acknowledgement of such, the Verona Area School District is committed to disrupting these systems of inequity. And the Ho-Chung Land Acknowledgement. There are currently 12 tribal nations who call Wisconsin home, with the Ho-Chung nation being the primary group living around Madison. No matter where you are in the state, you're on ancestral land of a tribal nation. As we begin our meeting, we honor the land upon which we stand.
Thank you. Board members, let's take a peek at the remaining agenda for this evening. If there are any questions, amendments, please surface those. Otherwise, I'll accept a motion to approve the agenda as written.
Motion to adjourn.
Thank you, Christopher. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Corby. All those in favor of approving tonight's agenda as printed signify with aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Okay, moving on then. Agenda item number three. We had an election a few weeks back, and we have two board members that are returning for service for another three-year term. And so Corby, as our clerk, is going to administer the oath of office to both Joe Haynes and Christopher Pogaro. So I'll turn it over to you, Corby.
All right, I will start with Joe.
Do you want me to go first?
Since your focus is on this. For reference. Raise your right hand, sir. Sure. Repeat after me. I, Joe Haynes.
I, Joe Haynes.
Having been elected or appointed to the office of...
Having been elected or appointed to the office of Verona Area School District School Board Member at Large.
Verona Area School District School Board Member at Large.
But have not yet entered upon the duties thereof.
But have not yet entered upon the duties thereof.
Swear or affirm that I will support the Constitution.
Swear or affirm that I will support the Constitution.
Of the United States and the Constitution of the State of Wisconsin.
Of the United States and the Constitution of the State of Wisconsin.
And will faithfully discharge the duties of said office to the best of my ability.
And will faithfully discharge the duties of said office to the best of my ability.
Congratulations, sir.
Travel slurp.
Raise your right hand, repeat after me, sir. I, Christopher Pogaro.
I, Christopher Pogaro.
Having been elected or appointed to the office of...
Having been elected or appointed to the office of
Verona Area School District Board Member, course to the city of Pittsburgh.
Verona Area School District School Board Member, course to the city of Pittsburgh.
But have yet not... Yet, but have not yet entered upon the duties thereof.
But have not yet entered upon the duties thereof.
Swear or affirm that I will support the Constitution.
Swear or affirm that I will support the Constitution.
Of the United States and the Constitution of the State of Wisconsin.
Of the United States and the Constitution of the State of Wisconsin.
And will faithfully discharge the duties of said office to the best of my ability.
And will faithfully discharge the duties of said office to the best of my ability. Congratulations, sir.
Thank you, Corby, and thank you again for your continued service, Joe and Christopher. We're excited to have you continue to serve on the board. Just a quick note that we do have our equity statement in our two other languages spoken in the district by instructional purposes, so Spanish and Mandarin. So just wanted to make sure I called attention to that as well. Moving on through our agenda, we're moving to staff recognition. I have a hunch that may be why there's a large number of folks in the audience. We have a really rich agenda tonight, however. So I'm going to actually turn that over to Dr. Flaherty to start to provide some context for us on the number of amazing staff members that we're celebrating this evening.
All right. Good evening, everyone. Again, I'm Dr. Trumay Flaherty, and I'm proud to serve our community as superintendent. And I also get the honor of, after Board of Education, to bring staff celebrations before our board to be recognized in this occasion, but also recognize the great service that they continue to do throughout our district on behalf of all of our families here. And so today, we have the honor of multiple award winners from across the state and across the area. And it's going to be my honor to begin with Lumee Wayne. Excuse me, Lumee Huang. I apologize for Lumee. Sorry about that. She is the Herb Cole Teacher Fellowship Award winner. I don't want to say congratulations. And she's here with her team from BIS. And Ms. Parks, did you want to say if you worked?
Well, just that we're really fortunate to have Lumee on our staff. She works with our kindergartners and our first graders in Mandarin. She does a great job of loving our brand-new Mandarin learners into our school. She has such kindness and compassion. She is not hesitant to be silly and fun with him, which really makes learning Mandarin, which can be challenging and a difficult language to learn, really a fun and exciting time for kids and really gets them started off on that path. And I know there's a lot of families here celebrating her also, and we are just really fortunate to have her there.
Absolutely. Thank you. Thank you, Lumee. And I was excited to come see you in action two weeks ago now, when you learned about the award. Kind of a surprise visit, so thank you for everything you do. And you're amazing with your students, and you just brighten up the space everywhere you are. So again, we greatly appreciate you.
Thank you. Thank you so much.
Next, we have a two-time award winner in the same space, and it got it on the same day. Mr. Brian Cox. How are you doing, Mr. Cox? Mr. Cox received a dual award. At first, he received the Herb Cole Principal Leadership Award. And as a winner of the Herb Cole Principal Leadership Award, you also go into and are nominated for the High School Principal of the Year. And Mr. Cox, last week, in a surprise celebration in front of the staff, students, and many of his friends and family, learned that he's also the State of Wisconsin High School Principal of the Year. So a double celebration for Mr. Brian Cox. And as the award train keeps rolling on, we also, and it's a great day. I mean, it's great to be a wildcat these days with all these celebrations. We get to honor three of our amazing staff members for the Wisconsin Association of Bilingual Education Educators of the Year Award. And we are going to have Ms. Rosa Maria do a presentation for our three award winners.
So I'm going to read this in Spanish because we have guests in the audience who are here this evening for their loved ones. So el educador del año de la asociación de educación bilingüe de Wisconsin, también conocida como VYABE. Es un premio que reconoce y celebra a los educadores bilingues y culturales de todo Wisconsin que han hecho contribuciones significativas en la educación bilingüe y multicultural. VYABE, a través de su convención anual de la vida honra a estos educadores por su dedicación e impacto en los estudiantes y la comunidad educativa. Tenemos tres educadores, diez y que fueron nominadas por sus directores para recibir este premio y se darán reconocidas este viernes en la conferencia. Entonces primero tenemos a Liza. Uh-huh. My. Andrea Carlos León. Y Diana, pero no, menos es falta de Diana Castellanos. Felicidades y gracias por su excelente servicio a nuestros estudiantes. Continuemos el programa.
Again, I'd like to extend definitely congratulations to these amazing dynamic educators this Saturday, no, sooner Friday night, and then into Saturday. We have the honor of being able to recognize them in the Wisconsin Dells at the VYABE conference. So we get to celebrate a little bit more at a recognition ceremony. So I look forward to seeing many of you there in that space. And then also just keep learning myself as part of the conference so I can continue to be a better leader in support of our multilingual programming. But again, congratulations to Daisy, Andrea, and Diana Castellanos. Congratulations again. And we're going to keep going with celebrations. About 10 days ago, we learned and were able to recognize that we have the Wisconsin Technology Education Association Award winner as well in our event. And that honor is we are proud to recognize Mr. Phil Smith for winning that award. Congratulations. Mr. Cox, any words for Mr. Smith?
Yeah, absolutely. Mr. Smith is a staple of our career in technical education programming. You can see him in every facet of our building in one fashion or another. He has been a huge component, not only attracting students to our career in technical education field, but also creating new pathways, new coursework, new ways to engage them in an art form that is highly needed around our building, around our community, around our country. So Mr. Smith, we're going to move with that, and we appreciate you, sir.
One of the things I want to elaborate on with Mr. Cox and what he says. Mr. Smith, in just the short time I've been here, well, four years now I've been here, I have noticed a new and aspiring group of students that are really galvanizing around career tech and education. And I notice an intentional worth of work and wanting to be in the presence of Mr. Smith. I'm also seeing that space be far more diverse, especially more diverse than compared to the other spaces that I've been in. And that really speaks to our equity framework and our executive statement to see a diverse population representation in career tech. And when you think about the opportunities that really our students are able to engage in in that space, but also when they leave the space, often walking away with licensing and skills. If you ever take your car in or have to get something worked on, we know how much that costs. And the skills that our students are developing are just dynamic. So again, congratulations. Thank you so much. You're a well-deserved honor to be. All right. So our next celebration is our congratulations on just an amazing team of educators that have really served our community with grace and honor and integrity, and are just great human beings to be around. Coordinatively, in our retirement for this year, you have 333 years of service to the Verona Area School District, to the education that's going to be leaving us to enjoy and just the well-deserved retirement that's out there. And so while technically it is a loss for the Verona Area School District, it's actually a celebration. That's why we're calling it such. Congratulations on being able to move forward. So we've done a video montage in celebration of our retirees. And as you see them somewhere here in our spaces, we just want to make sure we recognize the years of service for our retirees. So we'll begin our video. If I could please ask our retirees up here in a sense, and they're very humble. They always like to fire up, I know. But please stand and be recognized for your great years of service to the Verona Area School District.
I think it was, was it just the last board meeting where we actually get, as a board, to approve the retirements? And I feel like it's a combination of reluctance and celebratory kind of moment as board members to just take that time to really honor, reflect, and celebrate the folks that have served so long in this district. So we took a little moment to take pause at that last meeting, but now to have some of you here and have a larger audience to really just share our gratitude. And I always appreciate just elevating the gratitude of all the impact, not only that you've had on kids and families, but on colleagues. Just the impact that we kind of have as staff with one another. That loss is highly felt. And your mentorship to future educators and new educators in our buildings has been really impactful as well. So thank you again to those of you here and those not here for the 333 years of service to VASD. Congratulations. And I think I said last time on then starting to look younger, every year, now year after. Because it has told, anyone, do you notice this? Oh, my gosh. So looking forward to seeing you all go through that as well. So with that, we are...
One second.
Oh, yeah, thank you. Okay. We're moving through to our superintendent's report and our agenda. We have library updates. We have all sorts of exciting things. But we also recognize you all have key things. I know. So please feel free to transition if you would like to. We certainly take any additional audience members if you'd like to stay. Thank you and congratulations. All right. Congratulations again. All right, so we will move into our superintendent's report, starting with some committee updates from Human Growth and Development. So I think we have some staff and leadership representation coming to join us to hear some updates on how things are going.
Thank you. This past week, Thursday, our Human Growth and Development Committee... Thank you once again to pick up from our last meeting that we had in February. And Katie, one of our committee members, is going to share a little bit about what we discussed.
The team reviewed a summary of the themes from our previous meetings where we had observed elementary, middle, and high school lessons. We shared areas where we felt our current curriculum resources are and are not meeting statute and our needs. The themes where we felt our current Human Growth and Development instruction is meeting statute or our needs include: A focus on the topic of consent, using medically accurate language, comprehensive and covering a wide range of topics, including things like healthy relationships and social media risks; Providing resources and support for students, either through confidential nurse forms or encouragement to seek help from trusted adults; Mindfulness of sensitive language accompanying this instruction; Different interactive ways the content is delivered; Accessibility of materials in different formats, such as word packets and canvas; Mention of legal and ethical considerations, like state laws and responsible online behavior. The themes where we felt our current Human Growth and Development instruction is not meeting statute or our needs include: Inconsistencies and gaps in required content across grade levels; Concerns about some of the instructional language and tone; Inconsistencies in the resources used and instructional delivered across grade levels; Concerns exist about the timing and format of the lessons, with debate over the duration of the lessons; How to best group students to receive the instruction; And when some topics should be introduced. Scared guardian resources felt insufficient, and some of the information provided feels outdated or possibly inaccurate, particularly our reliance on external videos, such as YouTube resources.
So at the request of our team to help judge current state, understanding we're not a curriculum adoption team, we're a curriculum review team, there was a request to look at what else is out there. Without the opportunity to see some other options, it was very difficult to judge current state. And so we took some time to review some resources that are being used in some other districts. And so we looked at the three Rs, a curriculum resource which currently is being used in Wauwato and MMSD, and looked at what Sun Prairie Area School District recently adopted. It was ETR HealthSmart. And the reason we chose those was that actually hit at some of the questions that the committee had earlier. One was what might instruction look like if we look more holistically kindergarten to 12th grade? And then what might more of a boxed curriculum look like that was aligned across grade levels? And so we took a look at those, and the team, at the end of the meeting, just had some following thoughts that they wanted to share with our board. One was that there is an analogy, that our teachers are amazing, they're excellent. But there were some concerns over just the variability in the current Human Growth and Development model, with a worry that, does the knowledge leave with the human? When people leave, with so many of the resources being kind of gathered within those teams? And that dependence on some of the amazing teachings, that wondering about a shift to a common resource that's more standardized across the district. The other wondering that the committee had was around resources for families and guardians who might want a clearer picture of what's taught and when to support that instruction at home. And that something that has more resources for families was something that was a curiosity of the team to be able to support those conversations at home that we know families are having, and that having some tools to help do that might make that a much easier process and something that our families are able to support the instruction at school. So with that, I will...
Can I just interject? So I just kind of want to frame this conversation tonight. And we started with what happened on Thursday. We gave you all an update in the report of what happened Thursday. But just to take you all the way back to where we started. Our charge was to review. And so when we started in October, we spent that first meeting making sure that the committee understood their full responsibility and what their charge was. Then we had our second meeting, and that meeting, we were able to explore our current curriculum. And so we heard from our educators. That following meeting, March, we heard from our middle school, which then brings us to this meeting. So we kind of took you all, we started with Thursday, and then walked back to our current work and what our current charge was. And so what was shared with you all tonight was just their thoughts as of Thursday. And then we'll turn it over to Nate, who will lead us in the next portion.
Can the team pause for a second? So, because I'm not sure that it's clear. I want to make sure the board is clear on is getting this update the way we want it to be. The charge of the committee was not to look for replacement curriculum.
Correct.
It was to engage in our own curriculum.
Correct.
The purpose of going out and looking at other curriculums was so you have something to compare ours to, but not to talk about replacements.
Correct.
And has the committee been functioning in that way?
Yes. So we reviewed our current curriculum, what we were using, and at the request of the committee, just so they would have something to compare and to make an informed decision or informed recommendation. And as a point, they then wanted to look at what else is out there so that they can then say, here's what we have, and here are our thoughts on what we have. So it wasn't necessarily to extrapolate, but it was to look at what we have and then make recommendations based on that.
Thank you. All right, just to go around at board members. All right, Nate?
So for this next portion, it isn't really an update, but more of a request for me as a facilitator. I'm asking that the school boards and the committee a letter of continued expectations. And what this letter does is it doesn't change the committee's charge at all, but really just kind of clarifies some past points that board members have brought up. It consolidates questions and feedback raised by board members during previous meetings. It clarifies what the board would like to see addressed and what the final report would look like. And then it does offer one directive for the committee to review as a point of comparison a specific resource. To be a little bit more specific, the formal directive is for, would be for the committee to review these specific resources and to answer these questions related to representation in the curriculum, mental health, family engagement, transparency, and overlaying with the equity framework. Now, the board today can decide whether they want to add to this letter, or they can decide to not send this letter, or they can decide to remove things from this letter. But I will leave that for the board to discuss as to what they would like to send the committee regarding continued expectations.
Thank you for consolidating that. So I think it was just to kind of address what you talked about, Dr. Hawkins, with our previous meetings and conversations we've had then at the board table about what we were hearing in terms of those updates after each meeting, and to try to consolidate some of the things that we've shared as feedback, and to overlay that with the current... and to overlay that with the current charge of the committee. So, Nate, thank you for putting this together. I think it's a nice summary to sort of capture what has been elevated at the board table thus far. Board members did get this letter in advance to have some time to kind of peruse and get a chance to read any thoughts and feedback about what we may be sending back to the committee more formally in this way and/or otherwise. So, I'm certainly looking forward to hearing any thoughts and sentiments that board members had on how this, the current report that we're hearing tonight, any questions that are out there, and then things related to the potential letter that we send back to the committee.
So, one consideration that we'd like to propose is using another resource that's internal to our own community, and that's our gender equity committee, Edmonds Monthly. It might be an additional lens, specific though, connecting to our own community, our own student body.
So, is that something that, for example, would get listed in this letter as one of our expected resource touchpoints?
That's what I would propose.
Okay.
So, I have some thoughts on this. I'm generally supportive of it, of the idea of giving specific questions that we want answered from this committee. The thing that I'm concerned about is it's starting to run the risk that the framework of this committee is getting flipped. Like, this is an advisory committee that is supposed to advise the board. And it's starting to feel a little upside down. If we start advising the committee how they should be advising us, it starts to feel a little bit backwards to me. So, I'm a little bit reluctant to give too much directive on saying, this is the manner in which I think you guys should go about your task that we've delegated to you. I'm definitely okay with clarifying what it is we're asking them to do, like the questions we want answered. I think that's a good thing and would be helpful. But I guess that's kind of the reluctance that I'm feeling.
I would just add one kind of detail, I guess, and maybe some of the concern of why there were some specificities, specifically around LGBTQ community. And I think the state mandate does not, that's not an inclusive part of what the state mandate asks. And so, that's a missing piece. We've got other parts to whether it's clergy, any members defined by that. But I just want to recognize that as of right now, as a queer parent, with a queer student in the district, I think that lens is something that we need to have in consideration for working at this. This is incredibly important. Just my own personal experience in being queer, I knew in very early on, and there was no support for me as a student. So, I think that in addition to politically where we are as a nation, really targeting trans and LGBTQ community and students, I think it would be helpful to have that lens.
And kind of to your point, Joe, the part that I've found interesting with this process is coming into this as something that the board owns in terms of what decisions we want to make around this, right? Given the state statute, et cetera. But also, learning as you all are learning. I don't know what goes into our curriculum. So, I feel a bit like this is encapsulating sort of the learning we've done as a board along with you. So, maybe it's just kind of in the way it's framed and sort of packaged, but I feel like this is a reflection of what we've thought about and reflected because of the work your committee is sharing with us. So, I hope it's a reflection back more so than a directive. And again, maybe it's just playing with the semantics of it. But that's kind of how I see a bit of the pieces reflected here is things that we've now started to be curious about and wanting to ensure that those questions get considered and pondered as we hear back from the committee about where our current status is with our curriculum.
I will say I appreciate the clarity and giving us a clear target because we certainly could explore, and there's lots of different avenues we could go down. So, having these bullet points does allow us to continue to focus our work and bring back the information that the board needs to make decisions to share with us so that we can move on to our next step. So, I mean, it is very helpful for us as we continue this work.
And even hearing kind of the summary of where you all are after just last week's meeting, that's super helpful too, to kind of start to feel you all coming into some kind of poignant takeaways. Because I recognize how much this has been for your committee. So, thank you for your representation tonight, sharing updates and just being a part of this work. Other sentiments from board members about just kind of anything at the moment, and we'll try to get a direction to Nate officially here on the letter that's been put together.
No, I agree. I agree with Joe. I think that, for me, some of my hangups are just semantics. Like, I agree with asking questions. Fundamentally, we're just asking like, how is what we got working? And what do you think we're missing? There's a lot of other language dressing it up, I guess. But, yeah.
So, I think I heard in addition to the resources, if that's something Nate, you're okay to add. And then, I guess I just have a general question. There's officially one more meeting this school year, which was sort of the frame that was provided of, let's see kind of how this review curriculum goes through May. Do you want to just give a sense of kind of, in general, where the progress is and how things may look after that last meeting in May?
So, we, as we invited the participants, we wanted to give them some idea of what their time commitment for this year would be. But that by no way shapes the end of this committee. There is no end until you all tell us that there's a end. So, this is the last meeting for this year. However, given our charge, we will continue until the work is done.
In terms of the review, so just...
In terms of the review.
Yeah, that we're talking about again, just a reflection back to the board about where we currently are.
So, then, once we receive the letter, then we do have another meeting for this year. However, we will then be able to give some guidance and direction moving on into next year.
So, I don't know that we need a formal vote, but I'm happy to do a vote in terms of the letter headed back to the committee. Nate, any insights on that, or?
Yes, you could move to vote to send the letter as is. You can move to vote to send the letter with the addition mentioned by Chris. You can move to vote to send the letter. We're moving the formal directive. We don't have any questions. It's up to the board.
Yeah, with that, I might just open it up to a motion then to see kind of where folks are landing, because this is all.
Well, maybe before we get there, just to talk it out a little, because I'll say where I'm leading. I don't like making a directive to tell our own advisory committee what resources they should consider. I'm okay with keeping it in there as it is, but just changing it to a recommendation. I'm comfortable with that, like to say, these are resources that we, you know, think ought to be considered. But, you know, we've convened this committee for a reason, so you guys use your judgment. And then, also, please answer these specific questions we've asked, including questions about how our curriculum handles inclusion and is consistent with our equity framework, which are important questions to ask. That would be where I'm at right now.
I would get to the question, maybe it's something, the resources that are listed here, are these like local resources, or assuming? Local groups?
I'm not so sure about the last one. That last one I know is something that we reviewed or the committee reviewed during the reset.
Well, I'm assuming the last one has to do with the open source curriculum then, because of the three Rs there.
Yes.
So, I'm assuming that that's on there because it's local, that's in other local school districts are referencing that material.
Oh, let me, so, I guess I should be clear. Like, these resources, none of these came from the committee, none of these came from facilitators. They only came from board members during past meetings. Same thing with these questions. There's all these questions and these resources, they were presented by board members as you should take a look at this, but without the directive of the full board, it does exist as a suggestion rather than a directive. Or at least, the majority of the board.
If there's support to amend to what Joe's reflecting with regards to recommendations versus directive, I'm supportive of that as well. I think that makes sense. And I think the only concern for me again was when we look at things from an equity lens, we ask who's missing from the table, and those who might be most impacted. And so, that was really the frame that I wanted to bring in consideration. But the other part of that is I've also heard from families around that specific piece missing and being more inclusive around that aspect. So, if there's support, I would move to change the letter to reflect Joe's change that it is a recommendation.
Including the gender inclusion committee.
Mm-hmm. Thank you.
So, I did hear there is a motion on the table to adjust the language to be recommendation versus directive with the addition of the added resource of the gender inclusion committee being another resource for the committee to reflect with. I did hear a second. Any further discussion from the board? So, I will note, there is, we don't have anything in the agenda explicitly stating board action on this, so if we need to make any adjustments in accordance to that, because we are moving to take an official motion and a vote, though that was not reflected in the agenda.
If we're going to take a vote, I would table it.
I'm looking at Nate, not to dismiss this question coming from you, but because we didn't list this on the agenda as taking a formal vote.
You can still vote on it, or you can table it.
Okay, so, looking for the legalese, then looking for insights from the board. If there's space to have further reflection, we move for a vote.
I think we can vote.
I think we can.
I think we can too.
I think we should vote.
Okay. So, there's a motion from Christopher and a second from Meredith, all those in favor of the motion to adjust directive to recommendation, keep the questions, and adding the gender inclusion committee as part of our references or resources, signify with aye. Aye? Any opposed? Okay. For learning, thanks for being patient with me too, as we learn about all these things that board members are responsible for. And thank you again for time, resources, insights. We appreciate all of you.
Thank you.
Thank you. See you again next month. All right, moving on to our district library plan progress report. Looks like a solid library team coming to join us this evening. Hello.
Hi.
Hi. Thanks for having me.
Okay.
Thanks for being here.
We're excited to be here tonight. Annually, we get to share out about our district library plan. Just a small portion of the work that our amazing librarian team across the district is doing. So, last year at this time, Chris and us, our district librarian, came before you and set some goals. So, tonight, we'll be sharing out the progress we've made on those goals as well as the continued next steps. I'm excited that we also have Andrea Frye, our librarian at Glacier Edge, here representing the important work of the team, and even some other team members in the audience. So, excited to be able to share the important work that our librarians are doing to support our work throughout the district tonight. Thank you. So, we appreciate giving this chance to do this. As a team, we really do find that our district library plan guides our work, and it really works in conjunction with what are the goals that we have as our district. At our last meeting, we kind of talked about like, what do we want our libraries to be seen? How do we want our students to kind of be able to use it? And the words that came out were welcome, seen, included, safe place for all, for inquiry, learning about themselves, and really getting that opportunity to push that a libraries for everybody. So, I think you'll see that as we go through, that this is what our goals are. As mentioned, we, oops, we have, this is a part of our Wisconsin administrative code. We're in the middle of our three-year cycle. Next year will be our last.
Good evening. Our libraries are all grounded in service to our students and staff of our school district. We have eight librarians as part of our library team pictured on the slide. We have a wonderful team, collaborates regularly together. We have nine school libraries for 11 schools. Over 5,800 students are served and over 890 staff are supported. As a district, our library patrons have access to over 125,000 books that are available in our libraries. They also have access to SORA, our Wisconsin Schools Digital Library Consortium, for ebooks, digital audio, and magazines. Also, access to many databases that students use for research. So, we have created a district library plan with three goals. The first is around collection development. The second is around standards. And our third is literacy and library connections.
So, our first really focuses on collection development, and collection development at every level, from books to the digital, to really making sure that our collection represents the current needs that we have of our students. Breaking it down, we have four sub-goals underneath this one. And the first one is really looking at developmental practices. We have a district budget of over $447,000. That's money given to us from the state that we have qualifications that we need to spend. But with that, we really try to make our intentionality know what we are doing. We worked hard at getting, work around our fairy tales and cocktails to really make sure that representation, it's an area that doesn't get updated very often. And so, we wanted to make sure that we were not, we just wanted to make sure that our pictures looked well. We also worked on adding Arabic books in the high school as one of our bigger things, and then continued to work with new vendors as we go through. We noticed that it's been a little slow in publishing for the last couple of years, but this last two years, we've seen a big push in diversity of authors, diversity of publishers who are willing to do more of the small group work. And with that, we are expanding what we have. Second part of it really focuses around selection and de-selection. So, deselection means that the books are no longer in a space that they're good for us or they're good for the students anymore. So, as a team, we've de-selected over 8,500. So, this was a couple of weeks ago, we've had a little bit more. We've added over 1,000 books this year. So, oh, 100,000. Thank you. 10,000. It feels like I'm under 1,000, but 10,000. Appreciate that. And some are coming, yep. My third part is really looking at databases. And last year, we worked on coming up with a guide to evaluate our databases. So, with that, we looked at FactSite and how we'll go this year. We've also added Swank. And then, we continue to look at new vendors as we've gone through the new language arts curriculum, finding some gaps. And so, we're trying to find some databases to best support on a K6, K8 levels for that. And then, the last part is collaborating with the district school and our VADA leadership. This is really connecting at the public library. This is connecting around how are we sharing access for all of our students? Because we still have some gaps where we have groups of kids who are not always able to get the services they need and how we make sure that we can provide that. And then, we're also looking at ways that we can be more flexible with our spaces and with the ways that we deliver instruction. And this is just, all of these pictures are of the kids with their books during, doing what we're hoping to do and enjoying what we have. And then, the bigger statistic at the top is what we have for books currently in the district. Average age of those contents, 2014, I'm sure my room is pretty darn good. So...
Our second goal is around the standards. And the goal states that our Ronary Area School District librarians will complete our work around the district-wide library standards and K through five curriculum. And the first part of the goal was to develop K5 curriculum and a scope and sequence. And we have finished that main, the main part of that up with connecting our work to the American Association School Library Standards. We are working on refining our I-KEN statements. And we are also working on connecting our lessons to our school district's digital citizenship curriculum. And we have required lessons as part of that that we teach our students in library for digital citizenship skills. Our second, the second part of this goal is to collaborate and co-teach with our teachers in our buildings. And we have led staff development on our resources and databases. We have connected our library resources and lessons with our students to our new language arts and social studies curriculum and research projects that our students are engaging in. We're helping get them the resources they need and teaching them research skills. And we have begun a project surrounded around the work of ACT 266, which is all about integrating AAPI, which stands for Asian-American Pacific Islander, resources to support our students' learning.
And our last goal is, oh, that's you. Go ahead.
And then, our third goal is around literacy. And then our third goal is around literacy and library connections. Our librarians will strengthen student, staff, family, and community literacy and library opportunities. The first part of this goal is to strengthen collective connections between literacy and libraries. We hosted our third annual District-wide Battle of the Books Field Trip Day here at the high school, with over 500 students participating, pictured on the slide. Our teams did very well overall in state competition across the district, and our Ron Area High School team placed first in the state of Wisconsin. And it's kind of absolutely amazing program that we have helped facilitate for our students, that they thoroughly enjoy. We also have our VASD Reads Book Handout, which is what we do for family connection engagement in the summer. We give out books to students and families. And we also have had, the last couple of years, a district-wide bookmark competition, which we use to help teach our students about copyright and creativity. And we had gifted a lot of some of those bookmarks this evening. And we also do summer book checkout for all of our students and staff that can check out up to 10 books for the summer. And we also had our first virtual author visit this year as part of our Battle of the Books program, which was very wonderful and successful and enjoyed. And we hope to have more of those author visits in the future. The second part of this goal is to strengthen individual site connections between literacy and libraries. And some of the things that we have done are to have guest readers in our schools, have special activities to promote libraries during National Library Week. Thanks for the support around that, and some nice social media. Marcy visiting our libraries was so nice. We also have partnered with the Madison Reading Project and the public libraries, connected with authors, and we offer personalized book bundles for summer reading. You can see some of the activities that have been happening in our schools and library spaces on this one.
And this continues to show the differences that we have that we are trying to do. And then last, what is our work for next year, in the true sense of it? For goal number one, which is collection development, continue to work and examine our collections. It is an ongoing, always needed opportunity. We're gonna continue to work on our representation in our libraries and really make sure we're looking at it through multiple lenses. Working on making sure our students are able to access our libraries, and then continue to look at our databases for that. Goal number two is expanding collaborative co-teaching opportunities. We are just still getting our foot in there. And as we continue to learn the curriculum better and have ours, we're finding our natural connections and how we can use support of them. And then wanting to go back to our elementary curriculum and seeing if this is, if it matches what we thought and what gaps potentially we have. And then the last one is strengthen our connection with literacy. It's an ongoing thing, so. With that, that is the end of that. Do you have any questions that we can answer for you on the district library plan? Well, I'll give that to you, because you know I'm gonna touch that.
Can you just remind me what happens then after next year, at the end of next year, right? That's the end of this cycle? Like, what does this work mean? The updates for us, seeing this work transparent for the district is so amazing. What does the work mean for you all then as a library?
We're gonna come up with another three-year goal. And we'll come back to you and say, here's what we believe our goals to be, and you'll have to say yes or no, and then we submit it to the state again. So we'll start a brand-new cycle. All right.
But there can be a continuation of existing goals that we're working on.
Absolutely. Can be. Yep, make it look somewhat the same. Yep.
Really appreciated that the library team has really embraced our curriculum review process. As you see, they've worked really closely with Language Arts and Social Studies Curriculum to make sure that the library resources match and enhance the curricular resources that we're adapting in the classroom. Later tonight, you'll hear about secondary science materials, and it's awesome to know we have a library team that will come right alongside with us after we make those decisions and make sure that our libraries also further enhance those experiences. So we hope to see those continue in the next. Thank you for all your excitement and energy and the co-teaching, right? Developing just the whole, all of the learning and teaching that happens in our spaces. Please send our gratitude to all of the library staff.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks for your support. All right, moving on to some budget, finance, and operations updates. A nice revolving table this evening with all sorts of expertise and insights today. Greetings Chad, Pete, and Rochelle.
Hello, we're on the Board of Education. Good to see you guys tonight. We have two, I think, very related updates here for the school board tonight. And we have previewed both of these, both through your approval of us moving to Dean SSM Health for our health insurance provider, and the budget update that Pete and I gave you, I believe, at the last board meeting, in terms of all the kind of interrelated new parts we have going on here tonight. I'm actually gonna turn things over to Rochelle to start, because we first wanted to make sure the board had a little deeper understanding of our proposed plan for an onsite health clinic, the why in terms of what we're doing with it, and kind of some of the moving pieces logistically. And then we have a budget amendment we're asking for board to approve tonight that actually does tie right back into the defeasance vote we did at the last board meeting. And we've got some funding sources we want your approval for in hopes that you'll support the onsite clinic. So I'm gonna turn it over to Rochelle. We're certainly excited to answer questions. If you folks have anything, any questions regarding the onsite clinic, we're quite frankly just excited about the possibility of this becoming a reality for all of our staff here and families in the near future.
So tonight, we're hoping to share a little bit of the path that we've taken since we came to a couple of months ago, with the board approval to switch to Dean Health Clinic. As a part of Dean coming in and starting a relationship with us, they also provided some opportunities for an onsite or nearsite clinic available to our employees. And really, this would be for us to continue to find innovative ways to increase our overall health of our employees, focusing on the wellness part of our strategic framework, as well as helping us find a better way to stabilize our insurance premiums year-over-year. So it's a bold ant. So tonight, we're gonna hear about the work that we've done up to this point, and what a clinic would look like, including what we would say is a 1.2 AP, Advanced Practitioner, that one's a private clinic, 1.0 Medical Assistant, as well as a 0.6 Behavioral Health Provider that would be available to our employees and their immediate family members.
And Rochelle, can we clean that up into our community language? They don't know what 1.6 means.
Oh, yeah. Yeah. So 1.2 would be a full-time AP, and then another person that would be available for one day a week, so 1.2 FTE. So that would allow the clinic to remain open from about 7:00 in the morning until well after 5:00 in the evening.
Good, Dr. T. And then the only other piece I'll add, is the board will really have three cracks at the approval process here. Tonight, we're asking you for a budget amendment related to the construction of the space. Once that moves forward, hopefully, we will actually build into the 25-26 budget the staffing related to the onsite clinic. And then the in-between piece will be, you approve the monies to build the clinic, we'll actually have to bring it back to the board to have you approve the actual construction. So you'll have three steps along the way that will need your approval for this. This is really the first domino to fall this evening.
Sure, I may hand this over to you, because you talked a little bit about the budget piece.
Sure. So we, what we've got up here is a sample floor plan of what Dean essentially presented to us when we kicked off this project. Rochelle and I, and a number of team members, both from the district and from Dean, are meeting with, meeting as a team on a weekly basis to keep this moving. This will be a substantial project when it's done. And this was kind of their idealistic floor plan in terms of spaces that the clinicians would need to meet with our staff and staff's families. We have done some initial estimates in terms of the renovation costs, and we believe that will be somewhere between $500,000 and $700,000 until we are to the spot that we officially named a spot in the district that we're renovating. And we have a full plan to move forward with. We will not have an exact dollar amount. The related budget amendment that we're recommending to you tonight, we would essentially put money into John Bremer's budget that did not exist when we drafted the 24-25 budget. It's held aside for this. In the event that we brought this project home for $450,000, and they had money left in John's budget, that is not money that will go to waste. We have, John's working on a roofing plan right now for a leaky roof section at Badger. There are roofs that continue to need to be repaired, windows and parking lots. And our facilities will certainly be able to use any additional savings we find from the construction and renovation of the space. So that's, our initial plan is essentially providing a funding source for you to approve the spend down the road. That's helpful, Rochelle. The bottom piece I do want Rochelle to speak to, because this does have to do with what we believe... I think in a nutshell, Rochelle and I have said all along, if this was a budget-neutral, long-term investment, or even had a slight budget add in terms of us having to spend more resources on it, I think we'd still be here recommending that we would do this. In terms of convenience, in terms of ease of care, in terms of our staff members being able to hop on a prep period to run to an onsite clinic and get back to class, and not have to take a half-a-day sub to do it. But these are examples that Dean's provided us in terms of potential savings when it comes to the claims reduction down the road. If we really get good at this, incentivize employees and families to use it, every time someone goes here and does not go to urgent care, that is a claim that does not hit our books when it's for renewal time. And that's the big idea, other than it just being an amazing convenience for our staff members.
And so when you think about return on investment, we talk about the build-out piece. But there's also an ongoing piece that we are contracting with Dean SSM. So it is expected that we budget and go back about $700,000 every year, and we cut a check to SSM for the operational piece of the work. So that is paying the people that they hire, tying into the Epic system, the facility usage of lab supplies and the beds. All of those pieces, we're paying SSM to manage. So when you think about that, that's a cost that's going out the door immediately. But like Chad said, on the back end, every time someone uses the clinic for healthcare, there's no claim that's associated with it to our health insurance plan. And so there's an immediate return on investment there when we see our claims go down. And what Dean is projecting is that in the next four years, we should see a 10% reduction in claims that will help us negotiate our renewals a whole lot better. On top of that, there's other savings, like Chad said, for staff missing work that should be minimized now, because they should be able to quickly drive to the clinic, and we have less lost time in our classrooms. We're also seeing other pieces of the puzzle that are really good returns. New employee physicals and onboarding. Our new employees are gonna be going to these providers and making relationships when they join the clinic, and they join the school district. So we've got relationships built already. We will see workers' comp claims hopefully go through there, which lowers our workers' comp claims. So there is a large return on investment on top of the 10% savings that is projected to see within our insurance plan that increases the overall wellness of the district holistically, just immediately off the top.
So just quick, before we move on that slide, just reiterating that the sample floor plan you've shown is sort of something that we are getting as like, this is what an ideal space would look like. But location is TBD. This is really just the initial movement from us as a board to be able to give you permission potentially to start using the funds that would be necessary to keep going down this path. This is just a, hey, an ideal space would reflect this kind of floor plan.
Exactly right. So when we're meeting with Dean, they essentially said, they've done these anywhere from 1,200 to about 2,000 square foot spaces. They said, here's what we need for the staff, we're gonna be receptionists. Here's what a computer closet looks like in square footage, we'll need. Here are the rooms that need sinks. Here's an area that we might need for staff to break away and have individual meetings with the folks that are coming in. And gave us, really what they call a program in the construction world, and you hand this over to a team of designers. Here are the non-negotiables in terms of who's gonna make this work. And that's really where we're at right now in terms of cost estimating to renovate a couple of the spaces we're looking at. Next time we're here with the board, we will share where we ended up in terms of our recommendation with the space we're gonna renovate. I think we're close to that. We're continuing to kind of have behind-the-scenes meetings with a design team and a contractor to hone in on which one's gonna be the most cost-effective and which one's gonna work the best in terms of displacing people. This will not be new square footage in our district. This will be a place that we already own and need to renovate, and essentially turn into our own little mini urgent care, our own little mini clinic in the district. So this will have like healthcare standards built into it when we renew the space.
A couple of things that I'm just curious about. If we're building this inside, presuming the high school, that we're looking at? No? Okay.
I guess that's gonna be a big reveal when we're ready.
So that may be where my question will land once there's a reveal.
Yeah. Yeah. And will be part of the board approval when we come back to recommending the construction project. I guess in essence, will also be the site. But we're confident that the two that we honed in on are gonna hold you in your spot. And again, we're keeping in mind what's gonna be best for our staff, but also at the same time, we have to make sure that we're not taking away student programming space that couldn't be replicated well when we do it. So I think we're almost there.
Yeah, so that does kind of lead into then, just like in broad strokes, I wanna make sure that we're not introducing, you know, any security issues if we're having this open to family members that there is dedicated entrance access.
That is all part of what we're actually talking about with Dean every week, that they're pushing on, where is he getting accessible parking? How are you making sure this space is isolated from the rest of whatever else is going on in the space that you renovate? And Dean, Rochelle, that slide will show this. They've successfully implemented this in a number of school districts around the space, around the state, with essentially this kind of standard that they're continuing to push on. So they'll have heavy input on the design of the end and what it looks like.
So one thing, I would just imagine that if people are listening to this and we're talking about having a medical clinic inside somewhere in our district, they're not introducing illness and germs into a space filled with children. So we can rest assured we are not doing it.
Very careful.
Yes. The other thing, we have some guarantees from Dean that future premiums will reduce based on number of claims.
No, it's almost impossible to do that. Yeah, that's been, I think they're actually sick of me asking that question. In the world of healthcare, and we have, I think, a couple of board members who live in this world as well, they will tell you it is, it's impossible for them to project two or three years in the future in terms of the cost of healthcare. Next year, there could be a brand-new medicine to treat a certain disease that someone in our school that's great kids, that could be even more expensive. That is, we ensure for, and we have no idea what year three looks like in terms of our claims. And they will never give us any guarantee in terms of what that looks like. I think it gives us leverage when it's our time to renew a contract with Dean that look at how well we're running in terms of our claim rate compared to where they projected us. And that's the best we can do at this point. They will point us to other school districts that have seen a reduction or a flattening of claims when it compares to other school districts that have not gone forward with an onsite clinic. So that's, that is the best we could squeeze. I, like Rochelle, can we just get them, if we have 7,000 visits at this clinic next year, that the guarantee on the dotted line is gonna be a 5% reduction? They won't touch it. But because in their world, they should have too many unknowns, that they will give us any guarantee.
But we've kind of been locked in with Dean in putting this type of capital adjustments. I mean, realistically.
Not necessarily. We don't know what this landscaping looks like in four, five, six years. If we felt like we had to go back out to competitive RFP because Dean's rates, we didn't feel like they were giving us a fair shake, we could write into the RFP that we've already had this set up. We already have, we've already proven that this is a valuable asset. Write us an RFP with this as part of a package. So I think that's in the mix as well.
That's great enough, thank you. And I think just the... Thank you. And I think just the other, the other investment returns that we're seeing from subs and time and travel and all that and employee benefits.
Yeah, there's, there's just a huge piece of just staff wellness in general to this. So that we will certainly have to work with probably Sydney Peach and Rochelle, likely Marcy, likely many others will have to put together plans for incentivizing folks to use this space. We met with some Prairie Wellness Coordinator just last week, and that's almost all she does, is try to push usage at the onsite clinic for various reasons to promote staff wellness. Thank you. But to make sure I'm understanding, there's no, there's no impact on our medical benefit spend until renewal time?
These are two completely separate contracts. The clinic is through SSM. Insurance is through Dean. So there it is to your question. If down the road Dean were to change, we still have the contract potentially with the onsite clinic to still run simultaneously.
Right. What I was asking is, there's no connection in like years one through four of our agreement with Dean that reduction in our claims impacts what?
Correct.
So you already touched on this, but I just want to make sure I'm hearing this. So, and I think this is a good idea, but so we're talking about spending say 500,000 dollars to 750,000 dollars to build it. We have numbers from Dean that show that the outlaying of expenses that they would do over 10, over four years is 10%, about $4 million. We would see a benefit when we potentially renegotiate our contract with them. And the only way to see if we're getting a return on investment on this is if we can get some kind of data presumably from Dean that shows that the clinics that they've dealt with, that are the organizations that they've dealt with that have onsite clinics on aggregate have a lower increase than their other clients might have had in the same years.
That is true. Rochelle, I mean, take a, let me take a run at answering this question and you can check me for my understanding. So number one, on an annual basis, we built into the Dean contract that there's a rate cap, that they can't raise our rates any more than 7%, I believe it was. But that is an annual discussion we have with Dean. One of the pieces of evidence they use to bump up against that 7.9% cap is here's the money you paid Dean SSM Health, here's how much it costs to insure your school district. And if those numbers, the magic number in that world is 90%, and if we are running over 90%, that gives them evidence to say, Chad, it's 5% this year because you cost us more to insure than you paid Dean. If we are, if we are on the other end of that and running at 87%, that is 13% profit. And that gives our team an opportunity to say, we should be a zero this next year because you ran a profit of 13%. And you do not, there's no way we should be anywhere in the neighborhood of 7%. That's kind of the annual aim of cat and mouse that goes with negotiating a healthcare contract.
And from a healthcare contract negotiation standpoint, we cannot see individual claims on what's driving our healthcare rates. So we don't know, you know, someone's going to have a heart attack. What we see is our total aggregate for claims. What we get from the clinic is we will get more detailed information on the clinic side, not specifically who is visiting, but the number of office visits, see the types of claims that are avoided, and some of the preventative maintenance or preventative things that have happened. So we can take that data back to Dean to say, here are all the things that we've already been able to manage in the clinic that is not counting towards all of the claims in the process of the year.
Okay. I have another question. As we're talking about this and just the convenience for staff having a clinic on onsite, what's the status of the Dean South Campus or anything that's clearly convenient? Do I just don't want something to be built here and then be obsolete because of a specialty center?
I believe that will, that will eventually happen. So from our understanding actually at IDAC, the Dean SSM Health is working through the permitting process to do that build. I think there's a few little checkboxes in terms of traffic flow and eventual expansion of that intersection that's kind of right there, that they're still working through with the city of Verona. But we, they haven't told us anything, but it's, it's full steam ahead and eventually will exist. We also, we believe that that is in some ways a double win, that in the city of Verona, we'll have access both with our onsite clinic and Dean SSM Health that will have a much more well-built out, you know, opportunity to get care outside of what we could do at an onsite clinic. So we, we believe it's, it's a good thing.
And the onsite clinic is actually set up to be a $0 copay when someone visits the onsite clinic. And if you go into Dean, it's a $20 copay. So we are incentivizing folks to come to the onsite clinic as a no-cost option rather than a cost option of favor to go to the onsite clinic.
And after talking to Sun Prairie's Wellness Coordinator, there will also be much more kind of ease of use. My guess would be you're not calling and getting a touch tone map. For this option, press nine, you're going to get a person and you're going to say, here's my prep. When's the next two times in the next couple of days you can squeeze me in? And then you actually, our goal is you'll build a relationship with medical care providers that work in our school district, understand our work, and actually begin to know our 900 employees and families. And that, we believe that will happen as well.
Excellent. So the next slide, which we can't see up on the screen just yet, is some of the successes that Dean and SSM have had within Dane County and within their network. So specifically within Dane County, there are three other school districts that have built out onsite, nearsite clinics that have been wildly successful. Sun Prairie School District, Wanaki Community School District, and the Middleton Cross Plains Area School District all have these onsite clinics. We've reached out to them, have asked them lessons learned, things that we should know, and have received amazing reviews from all three school districts. Specifically Chad's mentioned Karen a little bit from Sun Prairie. Sun Prairie is kind of the leader in their onsite clinic, and we had Karen just provide a short little quote. And I think the piece that stands out to me is she says that their clinic strengthens their ability to negotiate healthcare costs through claims avoidance and lowered medical loss ratios. She states that the clinic has saved them 450,000 dollars per year over the last couple of years. And she calls it a cornerstone in both employee well-being and financial sustainability. And those are things that I think we can feel comfortable saying with Wanaki and Middleton Cross Plains as well, as well as many of the other clinics that they've seen in partnership with other school districts. So we've talked a little bit about what this looks like holistically. I think there's some important pieces to also think about as this relationship potentially moves forward. There are things that SSM is going to manage that we have no control over. That's the staffing of the clinic, it's the clinic model, it's the appointment structure, it would be the technology. The school district will not have access to medical records. That is, that is through epic, that is completely hands-off from us. And then kind of that invoicing piece. What we get to control is really the eligibility piece. Who has access to the clinic, the clinic and wellness opportunities? We've learned that there are great opportunities to do wellness days, a derm day, a blood pressure day, a men's health day, a women's health day. Those are all things that we would partner with the clinic on, all of those operations pieces. The collaboration is the most important piece, and I think we haven't stressed enough how important it is to find the right providers that are hired for this space. And so while SSM will be responsible for hiring, we get to be a part of the process. So we get to help mold the way that we want the providers to work. What are, who are we looking for in a provider that will support our employees? How do we want them to interact with our employees? How do we want them to reach out to employees during downtime and during those times where we're really thinking more proactive than reactive? Those are all the exciting pieces that make this such a success for us. The things that I think are important to also align to is our work with, hey, check it out, operations, expectations, and results policies. We know a wellness clinic focuses on our strategic framework. It focuses on our equity framework. It focuses on the financial piece. There are so many pieces of this puzzle that holistically make us a better district. And so for us, we're asking tonight for the board approval for the budget amendments, we still have to do a couple of things. We have to finalize the location. We have to continue to work with you for the budget amendments. We have to build in those ongoing costs. We have to sign a contract with SSM. We have to figure out the construction piece, and then really the biggest piece is communicating once we're ready to communicate.
What's a reasonable timeline for all of this to be done? Rochelle would like a ribbon cutting in August. John Bremer attends these meetings and there's some eye rolling and some teeth gritted. So I think, I think we're hoping sometime in the fall. So we're, we have a tactician that is leading this from the Dean side, and she's a very good project manager. We're going to, we're going to do it as quickly as possible with the S P quality, and we have to make sure we follow all the right steps. Another question you have on here that we get to control who's eligible to go, does that mean that we could allow staff members who don't participate in our health insurance to use it?
That's correct.
Interesting.
Exciting.
I have a clarification, maybe a bit on ongoing costs, and then just I guess looking at that slide 40 about staffing and the hiring. So early on, we were talking FTE and we got a little clarification, but I think I wrote down what you said, and it's approximately three-ish total humans, right? Full-time humans that would need to be staffing this. So are we paying their salaries, SSM? So can you just clarify kind of where that came from?
They sent us a bill for the staffing. So they are SSM employees and we are paying them. It's, it's contract and service, almost like hiring a bus driver that we have some control and we make sure it's the right fit, but we would pay SSM Health.
And then obviously keeping the lights on, doing all the things, right? Of any other of our sites, we have the ongoing costs of just having that space.
Protocols and all that type of stuff. Yep.
Got it. Okay. And I'm guessing those will be more concrete numbers as well as we continue going this. Right now, we're just talking about the physical construction of this site that we're talking about in terms of a budget.
We are. There's other pieces going on behind the scenes. Nate Rochelle are negotiating a potential contract in terms of maximum percentage of staff salary to be set on an annual basis and everything else. And so again, there's, there's lots of moving pieces behind the scenes, but we'll get it all in a tightened package by the way.
So as board members, we can feel fairly comfortable that this is one piece of an ongoing budgetary conversation that's being talked about for what this obviously means full on in terms of financial.
100%. And the fact that you would sign off on the healthcare contract, you sign off on every purchase over 250,000 dollars, and you approve the budget, you guys will have multiple cracks at making sure that it's exactly like we all want it to be. All right. Dr. C gave me the look. We've got a long day ahead of us, Chad. So are there any other questions? All right. We're going to move on to the budget amendment piece. I'm hoping the board can follow me with this slight change. This is the exact slide we used when we had the board approve a defecence for debt management related on capital debt. As a reminder, we had about $6 million set aside with Fund 39 fund balance, money that we carry over on an annual basis that can only be used for capital spending, for the purpose of managing pre-approved referendum debt. And we recommended an $800,000 Fund 10 transfer that was originally built into 2425 budget. That was prior to us getting the project kicked off with Dean SSM Health and them telling us, this is likely a 500 to 700,000 dollar build-out, and we needed to make sure we had money in the budget to do it. So tonight, we're actually recommending a different funding source for that $800,000. Instead of using Fund 10, which is spendable money we can use any way we want, we're actually recommending we use more of the Fund 39 fund balance, if all of you are following me. So this is a, and this is again in our budget book on an annual basis. To start the year, we had a five and a half million dollar fund balance in Fund 39. We're recommending after our levy this year and all of the moving pieces related to tonight's budget amendment, that we would end up finishing this year with a projected 4.3 million dollar fund balance in Fund 39. And that would include the payment on the debt defecence and the additional $800,000 that we're recommending this evening that would not come from Fund 10, but would come from Fund 39. I'm going to try to beat you to a couple of questions. Why do we hold on to a Fund 39 fund balance? One of the main reasons we continue to do this, in the event, in the future, the board needed tools to manage our levy. We have some one-time funding to pay down capital debt and make our minimum required debt payments. This could come in handy down the road if we ended up going back to referendum and had to build out a debt schedule that was waiting for property value to catch up to the board wanting to level out our overhead, meaning that we could put a little bit more money towards a scheduled debt payment because we've built up a little bit of fund balance. So we're, we feel very good about the spot we're in with our Fund 39 fund balance, and we feel very comfortable recommending spending that additional $800,000 or so. We do have a few other budget amendments that we are going to go through rather quickly that we're going to ask the board to approve tonight. And as a segue to this, I'll hand it over to Pete. This is essentially big buckets of money that are ending up in a different spot this time of year than they were in October when we asked the board to approve the original budget. You've already done one budget amendment this year. We had TID come in, which is a new revenue source that we did not project in the 2425 budget for $360,000. We're here tonight to clean up a few other pieces in our budget to make sure we're as accurate as possible when we get to July. Pete, I'll turn that over for a high-level summary of what we're asking the board to approve tonight.
All right. I've been up here a while, haven't talked to a lot either too, so I'm going to clear the throat. So good evening, school board. Thank you and thanks for turning it over, Chad. One of the things we want to bring up about budget transfers and budget amendments though is you're going to see a lot of school districts doing these strategic moves at this time of the year. And what they're doing is they're trying to estimate how school districts are going to end the year financially is what they're doing. So it's, it's good for the local taxpayers and organizations to know, but it also helps statewide too, because everything that we go through here on the budget, I report to DPI and then DPI does an equalization aid estimate on July 1st where they try to guess where everyone's aid is going to be. And our aid amount is about $26, $27 million. So it's a pretty sizable number out there. So every bit of accuracy we can get out here, it's going to help everyone in the state. So hopefully all the school districts are listening and hearing that right now. First thing I want to talk about is the difference between the budget transfer and budget revision, because we use the terms, we use them to mean the same thing, but they're not actually the same thing. Now what a transfer is, is if like a principal or someone who runs a department is just moving money around. Like our award-winning Brian Cox principal here, if he, if he wanted to move some money from his principal account to our other award-winning tech ed department, I forget the guy's name right now. So if you want to move something there, that's a transfer. What that does, it doesn't change the amount of money that was allocated to the school. It doesn't change the amount of money that's in our whole budget. It doesn't change the revenues or expenses. Now what we're looking at today is revisions. Now revisions does change the bottom line. It's either it's revenue, like Chad was saying, something we didn't expect to come in, or if there's expense that we just didn't know about. So it does change the bottom line. So if you look at the table on the right of the slide, you can see how the bottom line will be changing by these proposed budget amendments. I do want to point out though, on the left side, when I have a green arrow facing up and a red arrow facing down, that's a monetary transaction that has nothing to do with what I think about a Dean Carr cost going down or something. So bottom line, I was sitting there, we should put down ourselves. So, thought of that as, I was sitting in a fair, we should put down ourselves there or something. So, anyway, everything that we are talking about for the revisions tonight was brought up a couple of weeks ago when Chad and I were up here, because we had talked about the special education aid, you know, think we're gonna get as much as we originally anticipated, but we're also gonna be getting more interest earnings and more enrollment money, so those will be canceling each other out. The dean clinic, we just talked quite a bit about that. And I also have some revisions for cleaning up our defeasance, which by the way, that payment went out today. So we officially sent a large amount of money to prepay some debt just this morning. And also doing a budget revision to Fund 49, that's the fiber project that Jason and his IT staff have been working on. We have a different way of being able to account for that, so we're actually able to carry over some of that money, so it can go over from year to year in Fund 49, just based off of the way that the revenue source came through. So, anyway, that is it. The next slide, I'm not gonna read all of this because I, yeah.
This is the detail.
Yes. The detail of everything that went in there. So this is the way DPI wants us to report our budget changes. So that's simply what it is. It's broken up by the funds. There are four tables here, so you can see the four different funds that are being affected.
Billy, please, I'll add, and then we'll turn back over to the board, I believe, is this is in general good news. We projected an $8.5 million budget shortfall. I'm really from the land purchase. We passed the budget. Now that's down to $7.9 million with these moving pieces.
That was one thing I wanted to touch base, as we're looking at this, if I'm just watching this for the first time, hadn't been tuned in in meetings in the past, I'm now shocked because we're operating, you know, in the red. Can you clarify that, please?
Yes, that was a planned deficit budget, because we built our fund balance up for one-time purchases, like the Pittsburgh land purchase. The board approved this from the get-go, that essentially we took $8.5 million of the district savings account to buy another valuable asset, and that was just land instead of cash. So that was a planned budget shortfall. That was the only time since I've been here that we haven't passed a balanced budget, but we did so. And Pete and I hope to be back up here at year end to tell you, as usual, we spun off 1% or 2% in terms of our annual budget, and can make another $2 or $3 million deposit back into fund balance, because we didn't run all of our budgets in the red throughout the year. So that was a one-time purchase out of the district's savings account that we planned for. That's why it looks like that.
And correct me if I'm wrong, if you subtract out the cost of the land purchase, we're actually running a surplus.
We would be, yes. Exactly right. Chad, we left you with a potential vote, and I'll let your and Dr. C work on the logistics there.
While we have the team here, any additional questions from board members then, because we are facing a vote then about the proposed budget amendment?
Just to be clear, so what are we, when we're voting on, we're voting on the amendment, so it's just really the transfer funds? We're not voting approval on anything beyond that, other than just the, so there will be more information coming when we begin that.
You're voting on that slide that had all those blue numbers.
Yep. Meredith, you will have a board approval for the, yeah, you'll have a board approval for the construction of the clinic, and then you'll have the annual budget to approve as well.
But that is helpful, because the language just strictly talks about the budget amendment, with that shift from Fund 39.
Correct.
Additional questions from the board? All right, then I would accept a motion to approve the fiscal year 25 proposed budget amendment as presented.
So moved.
Thank you, Joe. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Christopher. All those in favor of approving the proposed budget amendment from this evening, signify with aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
All right, we know, we, I'm positive that the two slides are gonna take under two minutes.
Under one minute. So this time of year, we also are planning for our employee salaries for this upcoming year. Part of that is base wage negotiations, which we are not talking about tonight. The other piece is additional compensation, which is built into the handbook, and a budget piece of this, which is our annual step increase. Our annual step increases vary by employee type. So our VAEA employees would typically see a 2% step increase, VASPA would be a 2%, CTS is 2%, and our administrators excluding the superintendent is a 1% step increase. But step increases, because they are a budget add, is something that we need the board to approve. So tonight, we are coming to you, asking for preapproval to do the step increases for all of our staff, excluding Dr. C, and we will come back to that next month for him. And the reason why we're doing it early is because our teacher contracts go out on May 15, and it would be great to be able to have the steps built into that, as well as on July 1st, to have all of our systems set up. So if the step increase is approved, you don't have to worry about a retro payment down the road when the budget is approved down the road. You have historically approved step increases around this time of year, so this is not something different that we're coming forward to this year as in years past. So for us, it's just going into that motion, and we've got some language up here for the board to allow for that budget amendment to be made early on, so that we can do the steps for the people listed here.
This was built into the five-year forecast. Pete and I shared with you last, in terms of our budget assumptions already, so we're comfortable this is an expense that we will be able to put into the 25-26 budget.
And that was the clarification. This is technically gonna land in the 25-26 budget, but because of past practice.
It's essentially a preview.
Yeah.
Exactly right.
Questions from board members? We'll move to vote. I will just add a comment that it's yes to honoring a year of service of our staff in the district. Just yes. So maybe you know how I'm gonna vote, but, okay. If there are no further questions, then I would accept a motion to approve the fiscal year 26 proposed service employee step increase as presented.
So moved.
Thank you, Corby. I will second. I realize I don't really first or second a whole lot because I'm facilitating, but I'm gonna second then. All those in favor of approving the employee step increases for the 25-26 school year as presented, signify with aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Thank you. Moving on to public comment. Anything I missed, Glory? I'm not aware of any public comments this evening. Okay, thank you. So then we'll continue into board action. We've obviously taken our first two votes, if you're following along on the agenda, so we're technically moving to board action part C, where we're gonna be reviewing science monitoring reports. So we have another team coming to join us this evening to check in on our progress in science. Greetings.
Hello.
Thank you for waiting.
Sure. So we're excited to be here tonight as part of board action. We're here for actually the, the monitoring report for science is scheduled for today. So foreshadowing that that will be the action that we'll expect or we'll ask the board to take will be to assess our progress as relates to our 2.1.3, our science monitoring report. As a reminder, our science monitoring report is currently in capacity building and has been for several years. So on the actual monitoring report and the executive summary, you can see some of the leadership moves that we've been taking since the 22-23 school year, when we began working to build capacity in the area of science. You'll see here on our slide, we have our current state that we presented at the bottom of that slide. At this point last year, when we were recognizing the lack of coherent instructional resources, 6.8, the lack of aligned resources to support our multilingual learners and our students with IEPs, and then above that, you see the leadership moves that we shared again a year ago, that we were planning for in order to address those gaps and continue to build that capacity. And so we're excited to be here tonight, joined by Karen Spock-Slover, our director of teaching learning innovation, Annalise Hell and Steph Sims, work for Brown Learning Systems, High School, and Savannah Oaks, respectively, but have been key leaders in this work that have helped us really lead this curriculum renewal team specifically for secondary science resources this year. At this point last year, we also made the important decision, the distinction, that we were gonna move forward with secondary science and now K-12 science this current year, because our K-5 educators are currently implementing two new curricular resources this year in language arts and social studies. Our secondary educators are as well, but those are often different people based on instructional design models. And so I'm gonna turn it over to Karen and the team to walk you through the very thorough process that they went through to come to the recommendation that you're willing to see today. And then at the end, you'll get the opportunity to vote on all of the steps that they took, and whether that meets adequate progress or reasonable progress for our monitoring report for science 2.1.
Good evening, everyone. We are excited to walk you through our process for curriculum renewal, specifically for secondary sciences, Amy said, middle school and biology, which is our universal ninth grade science course. We began our work, as we always do when we engage in curriculum renewal, making sure that we're grounded in clear commitments that are aligned to our strategic framework for the Rowan Area School District. So you see those five commitments there, and in particular, we want to call out our work of being standards-aligned in curriculum instruction and everything that we do. So you're gonna see that theme repeating itself throughout the process. In addition, we wanted to make sure that we spoke to the fact that we were aligned to our teaching and learning framework. We launched our teaching and learning framework this year for the Rowan Area School District and continue to find it to be a very robust and useful resource for us, both in the classroom level in terms of teaching and learning, but also at this level of looking at resources and making decisions about what those resources need to be for our students moving forward. I want to remind the board that three years ago, we had a team that engaged in a curriculum audit process. Annalise and Steph were a part of that process as well. The curriculum audit focused on the four core content areas of math, science, social studies, and English language arts. And those four questions that you see there were central to that curriculum audit process. We received feedback from teachers in those courses, who teach those courses, but also in the grade bands of K-5 and 6.8 as well. The results from that audit for science indicated that indeed, science was an area where we needed to tend to beneath the resources for teaching the science standards. And so again, those five items that you see listed there were clear results from that audit, and you'll see that lack of repeated a number of times. So we had a lack of standards-aligned resources and instruction, a lack of science essential standards assessed at each grade level. To just make sure that the board understands what we mean by essential standards in the Rowan Area School District, in core content areas and in academic areas in general, we have been designing what we have been defining, excuse me, what are the essential standards in that core area from kindergarten to graduation. So we're building that vertical alignment, looking at the standards first, thinking about resources later, making sure that we have that depth of understanding of the standards and that vertical alignment for kindergarten to 12th grade of what a student will be learning in terms of knowledge and skills. We also had that lack of coherence among grade-alike schools. So we had that inequity in terms of students may be learning from one curriculum resource, following one pacing guide, one scope and sequence at one school, and then the same, similar school on the other side of town having a very different experience. We had no real universal curriculum for middle school, so hence our focus on middle school first this year, as well as biology, and we had very few scaffolds for multilingual learners and students with IEPs. So those things surfaced as critical needs, and that brought us to the process of getting to our curriculum resource model. The team for the science curriculum renewal team is identified here. We had obviously 14 teachers, mostly secondary teachers, but I wanted to call out specifically that we also made sure that we had representation from our pre-program, and also that we invited three K-5 educators to join us. It goes back to what I was stating before, that we're committed to vertical alignment, so we didn't want secondary educators to be making decisions in absence of an elementary education focus and voice. And we were very grateful for their participation on the team. And as a side note, we will be looking at K-5 science next year. So this was a way to ensure that we had that elementary voice there. Our process is very robust. We begin in September and we end in February. This is the third curriculum resource renewal that we have done in the last two years, social studies, language arts, and science. And quite honestly, we're getting very good at it. So we're very proud of the process that we created, and we certainly came to some good results here. We also made sure that as we started to engage in this process, that we went straight to the educators who are currently teaching these science courses at middle school and biology, and asked them specifically for their feedback, both to pressure test our own thinking about really where are the gaps and what are the needs according to the teachers who are closest to the work. And you can see some of the feedback that we got there. And then finally, I wanted to be sure that you just got to see this sort of overall schedule from September to January and February. But what's important to note in some ways is that we begin with depth of understanding of the science standards and what we want for all students to know and be able to do in the context of science instruction. Before we get to any looking, any interest or any look at resources, we make sure that we are grounded in shared knowledge and shared understanding. And certainly, before we make any recommendations to you, we make sure that we've gone through a thorough process, including piloting the resources that we think are the most promising of classes. So I'm gonna hand it off to Annalise, who's gonna walk you even deeper into our process and keep you to sit evidence of our work.
So this slide represents three steps in our deepening of our understanding. We started with equity, and specifically equity in science education. We started with our own equity framework, and then you can see some of the other things that we referenced, including the national, or the next generation science standards, the Wisconsin standards for science, and some national publications, like a framework for capable science education. Next, we looked very deeply at the Wisconsin science standards, which are three-dimensional in nature, and I'll show you what that means in a couple of slides. And we really dug in there. And then we put that all together to create our must-haves and to create an evaluation tool that we had ready before we started looking at potential curricular resources. So this is just an example of our, creating our vision for equitable science instruction, and the team really grounded themselves in this work before we moved forward. We wrote a vision for equitable science instruction, and I'd like to call your attention to the second-to-last sentence, which says, "Students are seen, valued, and empowered to have a voice in their learning, as well as access and support to meet or exceed grade level standards in all three dimensions of the science standards." So this was a statement that we were able to come back to at the beginning of meetings to really, again, ground ourselves in our values. And it was important that we were grounded, because when we dug into the technical details, they were rich. There are three components to the Wisconsin standards for science. One of them is the science and engineering practices, how science is done. One of the dimensions are the disciplinary core ideas, just the what, science facts, and some skills. And then the third dimension is the cross-cutting concepts. Each performance indicator, which is something that a student could potentially be evaluated on, is weaving together of one of those three categories, or each of those three categories. So we, again, spent a lot of time unpacking these things. And the next couple of slides are some examples of the types of work we did to unpack. So here's a slide we used to unpack a science and engineering practice. An example of a science and engineering practice is obtaining, evaluating, and communicating information. There are also lots of mathematical science and engineering practices, analyzing data and so forth. Anyway, so we would dig into this and look at what it means to do the practice, what kinds of knowledge and skills do students need. And then we turn to the next dimension, which are the disciplinary core ideas. So these include things like life science, physical science, earth and space science, and so forth. And one of the things we looked at as a team was we looked at vertical alignment, so how do the knowledge and skills progress across grade bands? And that's what we're very grateful for, our partners from elementary grades, who helped us understand, you know, what it might look like in grades 1, 2, 3, as opposed to grade 9. And then the third dimension are the cross-cutting concepts. One of the cross-cutting concepts is patterns. And so another thing that the cross-cutting concepts get at is the difference between the nature of science and the nature of And then the third dimension are the cross-cutting concepts. One of the cross-cutting concepts is patterns. And so another thing that the cross-cutting concepts get at is the difference between the nature of science and the nature of engineering. So again, just to show you that we really dug into all of these different elements, understanding, trying to get a really deep understanding of what they all meant before we started to look at materials. Finally, we unpacked the performance indicators. So down at the bottom of this slide is the performance indicator. "Apply scientific and engineering ideas to design, evaluate, and refine a device that minimizes the force on a macroscopic object during a collision." This is my favorite kind of thing, drop an egg, make a cart, that kind of thing. Anyway, so you can see there are three things that go into that performance indicator. There's a practice, a concept, and then a disciplinary core idea. And again, we really grounded the team in understanding these nuances before we move forward. And this is an example of the team's work to unpack those three dimensions. I'll pass it over to Steph.
And so once we moved through our learning and growing together and our understanding of the Wisconsin State Standards, and especially those three dimensions, we grounded ourselves in our equity and our vision for equity in science especially. We developed our tool for evaluating curricular resources. So we took all of that into coming up with a rubric and what would it look like to see Wisconsin State Standards-aligned assessments, units, lessons in a curricular resource? What would it mean to have scaffolded and differentiated materials or to see disciplinary literacy living in a science resource? We came up with a look for, we refined the look for, we tried them out, and then we looked to see, do we have evidence of that? Is it clear? Is there some evidence? And what do we mean when we say some evidence? What do we see and what do we think might be missing? Or was there no evidence? We used that tool to really hone down the many resources that we had collected in Annalise's classroom. And so we were careful to also partner middle school teachers with high school teachers. We continued to look at that cross-school, cross-grade level alignment and really to get different perspectives on what people were seeing in the materials. And spent several meetings immersed in resources. We gathered questions for vendors along the way, things that we wanted to know more about or things that we wanted to make sure were in the materials. And so from there, we narrowed it down to our top recommendations. And we had teachers pilot the resources in their classrooms. So high school and middle school teachers took the resources, shared with the students that we were trying them out and that we wanted to hear their perspectives too on what they liked or what they thought might be missing in the resource, what they appreciated about the experience in the science learning. And from there, we narrowed that down even a little bit further and invited vendors to come and present to us. We came up with a list of questions that was quite robust that we asked the vendors to answer ahead of time and gave the team time to look through their answers. And then we had a live Q and A session going where teachers were writing questions on sticky notes. We were asking the vendors. We were gathering all of the information. The wonderful and amazing Laura took notes for us and really helped us get all of our thoughts together. But it gave time for the vendors to really elaborate and to make sure that we understood where pieces were in the curriculum, that we understood how the three dimensions were represented, where inquiry lived, where the scaffolds lived. Just gave us that opportunity to make final recommendations for what we're bringing here today. Oh, I'm sorry, I'm not clicking. That was a lot of responsibility I did not want to take, apparently. So our final recommendation for 6-8 is Amplify Science. From the committee, we heard that the resource was comprehensive. There was a wide variety of assessment and differentiation, seeing the resources. The resources were easy to use, the three-dimensional statements and standards were clearly represented. And most importantly, they offer authentic translation of the materials in Spanish for our TWEAP program. The students who were part of the pilot classroom for Amplify liked how they got to collaborate, how they got to see multiple perspectives on the articles that they read, that they got to work in small groups. Some positive feedback from students. And we saw clear evidence on our rubric with standards, with the availability of resources in Spanish, and that strong collaboration and disciplinary literacy. And then for ninth grade, we are recommending Activate Open SciEd. The committee is excited about the standards alignment and truly equitable science practices coming to our biology classes in ninth grade. They're excited about engaging standards-aligned resources that have lessons available in Spanish. Students liked how it was focused on real-life issues, that they were actively working and coming up with ideas, and that they seemed like the lessons were easy to engage and follow along with. And so again, on our rubric, we saw clear evidence of the Wisconsin State Standards, the three-dimensional performance indicators, inquiry, and that disciplinary literacy was also present. So moving forward, with implementation of science curriculum resources and acknowledgement of how crucial PLCs will be to this implementation, that we will use the cycle of inquiry as we analyze the curriculum, as we look at the needs of our students and make sure that it is meeting their needs and raising our equity lens. And then finally, ongoing professional learning that will be provided. We have a summer professional learning option in August for middle and high school science teachers, resource teachers, coaches to come to learn about the curricular resources. And then continuing to support PLCs, role-aligned late start Monday time and time within buildings as well.
So thank you, team. That really summarizes what we've been doing to build capacity in the area of science for our 2.1.3. So let's get before the vote. Any questions for the team?
I'll first just share a comment about the thoroughness. You kind of talked about this, Karen, and I'm feeling these little moments of familiarity with some of the frames in terms of how your work was started, right? About digging into the standards and really laying the framework for the resources that you analyzed, the piloting piece, I mean, all of these things, the richness of your work. Certainly, as a board member, to hear all of this is to not then for me to try to pass judgment on the process you did. This is exactly the point, right, of elevating the right voices in the room to be able to have this conversation. I admittedly, I'm just curious about one lingering piece, and I appreciate all the vendor questions, I mean, the depth and robust, again, nature of all of this. How, like from a science curriculum standpoint, when I'm thinking about phenomenon, all just the nature of change, and how responsive is the curriculum to just changing landscape of what's happening in the sciences? Because I know that something, math is a little bit different, right? Math is sort of always math. But with something like science, I'm super curious about just, you know, how responsive, how changeable is the curriculum? What is the platform that students are accessing? Is it technology-based? Is it, you know, workbooks? Just a little bit of that piece, because I feel like science just has that nature of change impacting curriculum.
The Open SciEd for ninth, which we drove for ninth grade, is an open source curriculum. And we'd like to get it through a vendor that would allow us to more easily deliver it in Spanish and also give teachers some needed supports. Because it's open source, there's a team of people that work on it, and it changes. And then the vendor actually has to keep up with changes that happen. So recently, there were some links that no longer worked after some things happened at the federal level, and the curriculum did have to scramble to make those appropriate changes to make the lessons still work. So yes, it is not static. Science is static.
Yeah. And interesting to see how curriculum then can also be dynamic as well.
And I think the same is true for Amplify offers both online and paper resources that we'll have to figure out when it is approved, what would be take the most time. But we saw evidence in the same materials that based on just things that had been updated or have been refined based on improvements and changes that we've developed.
I think too, Jen, the way that I'm hearing your question, and I wouldn't want to answer it too, is that the design of units of study built around essential questions through a phenomena-based approach really invites students to think through an inquiry lens continuously and to be adaptive in their thinking before coming to conclusions about the questions that are being posed to them within the resources. And that was one of the things that was most fascinating to me about these resources in particular, was the richness of that instructional design that's asking students to think through that inquiry lens in a really methodical, but also pliable way, which is what we want scientists to do. And then interestingly, when we had our K-5 teachers with us, they called out the same features that they wanted in their curriculum as well for our younger students. So overall, we're very confident that these resources will continue to deliver in that way. And additionally, because they will be available to us digitally and those changes, right, where improvements are made in real time in ways that are reasonable.
Thank you.
I know. It's so exciting. Yeah. And just to clarify, so with the monitoring report as being presented, it was being presented around capacity building and the process that you all just shared. So just reflecting back to you all to click that we are voting now for to approve the monitoring report as presented, not the curriculum recommendation at this point. So just, okay.
And just for clarification, please, Corby, we're approving it as capacity building as opposed to achieving progress.
Yeah, because in the draft that's in here, it says achieving reasonable progress, but there are no indicators. So I think it's.
If this is approved, then our charge would be to start to build the indicators.
Yes.
But is this just noted where the X is? We would want it, yeah.
Yes.
Okay. So we can move ahead, and we'll make that clear in the language that we're voting to approve as yes on capacity building.
Which excellent capacity building.
Yes, right. Just clarifying our.
Critique on that.
Right, right.
And Jen, the purchases and the consent now.
Thank you. All right. Any, so with where we are right now, any further discussion and questions? We have the team here, but I will accept a motion to accept the report as presented so we can just continue any discussion around capacity building. Is there a motion?
Sure.
Thank you, John. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Joe. So any further discussion then, board members around taking our vote around capacity building and having reached that benchmark in terms of what we've heard this evening?
Okay. I need to just modify that in the motion.
Yeah. Yes. So I guess, yes. I'll clarify that with, is that fair to say that your motion is around capacity building?
Yes.
Okay. So there's a motion from John, a second from Joe, to approve this evening's monitoring report for science as capacity building as presented. All those in favor signify with aye. Aye. Any opposed? Okay. Our report as capacity building has been approved. Thank you all.
Thank you.
Thank you for your attendance and time this evening. Moving on to board updates. Any general board updates from any board members?
I'm still awesome.
Just an update.
Just noted. Just a reminder to board members for attendance purposes, but then my offering to maybe share outwardly within your own spaces about our upcoming Greater Dane County gathering on Wednesday, May 7th, that is open to the community. So the frame is inviting in some of our local district representatives at the state level to come and be a panel to answer questions related to budget, state budget, funding, post-education funding, et cetera. And the hope is that we have broader community attendance to be able to listen in and just gather information that evening. So I will forward to you the accurate updated flyer that was created by Dana, the superintendent in Middleton Cross Plains. And please feel free to share as well. I know, Marcy, thank you for sharing to share that in a leadership letter, Dr. Clarion, that you sent to families. But just sharing to invite folks to come and share space in Middleton on Wednesday, May 7th, and maybe just let myself and Lori know if you plan to attend as well. Dr. Clarion, anything I forgot in terms of that announcement?
No.
Okay. Anything else? All right. And moving on to superintendent consent agenda. Sure you've taken a look at that. Any questions? Hearing none, the superintendent's consent agenda has been approved. And then moving on to board consent agenda, which we just got that piece about the science curriculum as being a part of this as well. Any questions? Hearing none, the board consent agenda is approved as presented. And then just upcoming dates, we obviously just talked about the May 7th gathering, otherwise just regular board meetings, keeping our cadence of first and third Mondays. All right. So we will move into board workshop. I appreciate if you all are okay, we take that kind of five-minute pause to reorganize tables, give a, yeah, just a pause for all of us to move, shift, and reframe ourselves for some workshop discussion. All right. Thank you.